Hello?
Hey!
Hello?
Just start, Mayor.
Okay, just start, Mayor.
Padurio, Councilmember Samuel. Okay, we're gonna resume at this time because we will be breaking for lunch at 12:00. And so, we're gonna skip over to Battleship Texas. It's one of the agenda items for today. And we're gonna ask Mr. Bruce Bramlett to please come forward. He's Executive Director of Battleship Texas Foundation. And he's gonna speak on the wonderful Battleship Texas. Thank you.
Wow, I like you already, Mayor. The wonderful Battleship.
It is.
Would it be appropriate if I had just a couple of minutes to update the audience and any of you that aren't aware, kind of current state where we are, how we got here? I think the info will be available for you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Battleship Texas is the only surviving U.S. naval ship that served in both World War I and World War II. If you've been in Texas for more than a weekend, you know that she's been at San Jacinto State Park since 1948. Has been a real maintenance nightmare, to say the least. We'll give you the Cliff Notes version here, 2007, State of Texas. By statewide vote appropriated $25 million from Battleship Texas. As you said a minute ago, I'm the Chief Operating Officer and Executive Director of the foundation. We're governed by a Board of Trustees that needs four times a year. Our finances are all audited by outside independent agency. We are a not-for-profit. So, back to funding. 2015, we lobbied the State of Texas, initial $25 million worth of structural work. Conditions ship had reached such in 2019 that the state was given serious consideration to scrapping the ship. I have quotes in my office what that was gonna take. We approached the state one more time and said, rather than spending the estimated 30-odd million dollars to scrap her after spending $50 million on her previously, give us that money. We'll fix her, we'll move her and fix her. I'm giving you the shortened versions called Santasville 1511. It was passed in 2019. You can read it for yourself. Basically, three conditions, two that funding of $35 million. And that is, number one, that the engineering works. And in fact, we can move it, yes. But I've never been overly concerned about that fact. The second thing was, we had to get the ship out of San Jacinto State Park. This is where you're gonna come in and not bring it back when we repaired it. And the new location must be somewhere on the upper Texas coast. I'm happy to tell you, as of this moment right now, about three weeks ago, we have an agreement in place with Gulf Copper. It's a shipping company down in Galveston who has acquired a dock, what's called a floating dry dock, that is large enough to lift the Battleship Texas out of the water. That dock will be delivered to Galveston sometime in April. Not long after that, I would say late May, we will tow the Battleship Texas down to Galveston, where we will spend the balance of the $35 million repairing her. On that list, in addition to dealing with the hull for years and years to come, also in our plan is to replace the deck, paint the ship. We have just over a million dollars in superstructure issues we need to address. I'm also happy to tell you, as of about a month and a half ago, we received a half a million dollar federal grant to address some of that work. In addition to that, if you see the ship, and you're welcome to come over, I'll say more about that in a minute. We have removed virtually all of the deck armaments off the ship, except the five-inch guns and the 14-inch guns. They are in a warehouse donated to us by NRG. We're completely restoring all of those. And while the ships in the shipyard were replacing them again, have I said enough to you? You understand, we have a lot going on. And we have had great success to date. The issue for us, now that the shipyard has been solved and that the ship will go to Galveston, we're delighted that those jobs will be in Galveston and that we will spend the state's money locally in Galveston. There's only one piece of this puzzle left, and it is the one who has been most present on my mind since this all started, and that is, where will the new home of the Battleship Texas be? It is the most critical question, I believe, we face as an organization. Because if we get this wrong, there will be no turning back. Big thing for us is, and frankly, is it all has to cash flow. At the end of the day, we have to do enough, we have to have enough paid visitors in order to maintain the ship, keep it in the great shape that it's about to be in. We're already making that direction. It's like anything else, it's about location, location, location. I can tell you that I was first contacted in July by the city and have had a few folks over to look around the ship and different conversations. That's a little quick backdrop for you. We are currently looking at multiple locations. And some of these conversations have been going on, have gone on for now, not months, but in the years, about where the ship will end up. And so, with that, I would say, hopefully I've given you a little bit. Anything I can answer for you, I will.
Okay, so, question. How long will it take to repair the ship?
Yeah, estimate's 12 months.
Okay. What would the City of Beaumont responsibility financially be as far as the ship being docked here?
Yeah, I think the big thing you'd be looking at, number one, is the shoreside facilities, the infrastructure. So, one of the things, obviously, when we get ready to move the ship, she currently is secured to what we call a monopile system. She literally floats up and down with the tide. Is, based on the new location, what's it gonna take? So, that's an engineering question, which I am not one. I'm a money guy, I'm a creative guy. I've raised, I've raised an awful lot of money. But we would have to determine that based on what that location would be, number one. And then, the fact that the ship is there means we have to have sewer, we have to have water, we have to have electricity and all those other things. And then, past that, I think it would really become an issue of the city. And this is what's happened in every case, is we're interested in having the Battleship Texas. We have a location we think would work. Here's what we would like to propose to you, for you to consider us as a place. I think you could quickly get down into the specifics, but I do wanna clear up one misnomer here since you asked the question. In every spot that we have visited with, somebody inevitably says, oh, we don't wanna get involved with the Battleship Texas. Because if it's in our city, then we are responsible to maintain it. I have no idea where that came from. It is totally false. We have a letter from the head of Texas Parks and Wildlife, Carter Smith, I've known him for years. That letter was originated for the city of Galveston. Because there were some board down there that said, we can't have the ship in Galveston because then the city's responsible for her maintenance. That is untrue. Let me say that again.
That is untrue. The State of Texas owns the Battleship Texas. Will always own it, and it's really a good thing that they own it. The Battleship Texas Foundation has a 99-year lease to operate the Battleship Texas. The state or the foundation without cause, either side, can cancel that agreement with 30 days' notice. You don't have to be a Rhodes Scholar to figure out, it's the State of Texas ship. So, whatever happens at the end of the day, the State of Texas is responsible for it, okay? Now, I hope I answered your question. Show us the spot. I know we've had some conversation in our meeting. We have engineers that have looked at it, it's a best guess, it's an estimate until you actually get in and look. But the main thing to me would be the shoreside facilities.
Okay, I'm gonna refer to our city manager, but before I do, how many jobs would this ship bring to our city?
If I say this on the record.
Well, approximately.
The chairman's not here.
We'll say approximately.
We have a difference of opinion. I think we're gonna be in the low 30s. He thinks we're gonna be in the high 20s. It's not gonna matter a whole lot in the end on which one of us is right.
30 permanent jobs?
Yeah, I think we'll be, now, that does not include the part-time that we use, nor does that include, and they're not employees, but if they start coming in the area, we are just north of 200 volunteers currently. Our volunteer population has exploded with all of this. So, 30-odd.
Okay, so, Mr. City Manager, okay. The infrastructure and the engineering, can you explain?
I can speak to that.
Right.
I wanna thank Mr. Bramlett for being here. Councilmembers Felschaw and Neal and I went over and met with Mr. Bramlett. He extremely knowledgeable, took a couple hours of his time, was extremely candid, and we appreciate that. I mean, he was just, again, very helpful and gave us a lot of good information. So, if the council wanted to move forward and submit a proposal, you probably wanna start by knowing what you're getting into. Meaning, you'd have to engineer the birthing or the docking of the ship. Where back here, you know, behind City Hall or the Civic Center, going down to where that riprap is before the curve? Where would you wanna place the ship? And then, you'd hire the right firm to engineer it. So, you know what your, know what your projected cost is. Are local taxpayers going to pay for it? Or is Councilmember Getz, as he gonna go out and try to raise the money? Which he's spoke about possibly doing, so. But I think, you know, a rough number, and this is very, very rough, and Mr. Bramlett, please correct me, but I think it's just a rough number, but maybe 7 million, somewhere in there. So, and then, you have to talk about, as he brought up, he's right on, he knows his stuff. Talk about water, sewer, electrical, parking lot. Gee, are you gonna pay for a gift shop? Possible museum? I don't know, that's, those are considerations, right? But let's just talk about the docking, the possible docking of the ship, 7 million. Is Councilmember Getz gonna go out and raise that money? And is he gonna try to raise the money to pay for the engineering of the project? The engineering, the engineering is normally, and it's a widespread, but let me explain this. The engineering cost, when you do these type projects, is a negotiated amount. It's normally between, say, 6% and maybe 12% of the projected construction cost. It's all dependent on the complexity of the project. And again, it's a negotiated percentage. So, the council needs to determine, do you wanna go out and hire a firm to give you that projected number? And then, to move forward with engineering? That project, and if you do, you gotta determine how you're gonna pay for it. And then, just know going in that he, Mr. Bramlett, if they decide their board to come to Beaumont, we found him to be just very good to work with. You need to know that the bigger things, the Corps of Engineers, the General Land Office, gonna have to sign off on this. Wherever you decide possibly to dock the ship, they have to sign off on it. And it takes a long time, as you know, just like with the Riverfront Park Bank Stabilization Project. We've had those plans submitted to the Corps of Engineers for a long time.
Let me, if I may just add, because I find this fascinating, I've sat through sessions over the years in Austin, I just wanna add a couple things. Santasville 1511 passed the Texas Senate on a vote of 31 to 0. It then passed the House on a vote of 146 to 0. There's a lot of support for saving the Battleship Texas. But here's the reality of it, that I think you need to know, that's gonna drive whatever consideration you make. We have $35 million to repair the Battleship Texas. We were told, you gotta find a new home for it. This is how much budget I have to do that. That 35 million was not about a new home, it was about maintenance work on the Battleship. When I say NRG has given us a warehouse to use, for instance, that warehouse is easily $15,000 a month, and we've already been in it two years. When, and so, I'm just gonna add to this. When Taylor Marine brings a floating barge crane out and removes all the weapons off the Battleship Texas, would cost us 70, $80,000 if we had to pay that. Julius donated that effort. That happens to us a lot because we're not-for-profit, we can issue in-kind donation kind of things. I don't know if any of this will play out to you, but what I will tell you is, I've been at this long enough to know there's a lot of ways to get where you're trying to go. And so, one of the things you may also look at is locally. For instance, right now, you're aware, it's in the paper, Baytown is making a big push to move the ship to Baylen Island. They just broke ground on a new Hyatt Hotel. Dredging is a huge issue to get in there. I mean, it's in the millions and millions of dollars. But they have local folks that have expressed to the city, we're willing to do this for a lot less because it's the Battleship Texas and we wanna see it over there at the island. I would tell you, get creative, and if you look at 7 million, I think the number will flush out, and then, you have to determine, is the value for the ship to be here? Let me add one other thing. Somebody asked me, they said, Beaumont, be serious, you know, we're not Galveston. Okay, well, don't try to be. There's north of 7 million visitors. They've got a third cruise line and a fourth one on the books that will be built. Here's what I think you do have going for you. There's an organization called Hints, all these old historic ships, we all come together every year. You remind me of a little bit about what they've done in Mobile. So, I look at Mobile and go, that's the possibility for Beaumont. I look at the Alabama parked over there that's drawing over 400,000 visitors a year. It has been a monster success for them, and I don't see anything in Mobile that I don't see in Beaumont. Now, I'm not trying to sell you, I have a job to do, we're gonna find the right home for the Battleship, and that's where we're gonna get it. But I do think in my heart, if you do this the right way, in my understanding of what you're trying to do to build this area back up, I would tell you, take a serious look at the Battleship. Not, it's not every day that a national historical monument shows up and is available. And the Battleship is one on two fronts. Not only is it a national historical site, it's also a national mechanical engineering site. And it is the most dynamic natural laboratory. And we haven't even started talking about the 60,000-plus kids who have spent the night in our overnight program, the thousands and thousands of people that literally travel from all over the world to come to our hard hat tour, behind-the-scenes look at the Battleship, or just the tremendous amount of special events, and it just goes on and on. So, I just thought I would add that for you.
Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Bruce.
You're welcome.
For being here. One of the things that I think needs to be mentioned is that Deloitte, the accounting firm, did an economic impact analysis. And while it was geared for Galveston, it was based on ticket sales. And if the number of ticket sales that are projected are anywhere close to the USS Alabama, it said that whoever's the new home port for the Battleship Texas will receive $10 million a year in direct and indirect economic benefits from the ticket sales to their community. And I think that's an important thing to think about in terms of return on investment. We, as a council, have talked for years about what can we do to get people off of the interstate to come into downtown. This will do that. There is no doubt that this will do that. Even at San Jacinto, which is difficult to get to, you gotta take a little bitty ferry, and you gotta really wanna go. You can't see it from my tent at San Jacinto. You're doing 88,000 visitors a year. We'll do that, we'll beat that, we'll beat that by far because you'll be able to see the ship from the Purple Heart Memorial Bridge. As far as the infrastructure necessary to bring you here, you mentioned it is the state's ship. I've talked to Representative Phelan, I've talked to Senator Creighton, I've talked to Senator Nichols, Chief of Staff. All of these people are agreeable to looking at having the state come in and helping whatever local entity it is that's going to do this infrastructure. So, it's not Mike Getz that's gonna have to raise this money. It's the State of Texas's ship, and it's in the best interest of the State of Texas to make sure that wherever this ship is placed is successful. So, if you look at it from that standpoint, I don't think the State of Texas is going to take kindly to spending $35 million just to see the project fail. If it takes another $5 to $7 million to build the infrastructure for something, I would expect and hope that the State of Texas comes out and, you know, picks up at least a good portion of that tab. But what we have to do, what we have to do is tell them what we're looking at in terms of a number. We've gotta give them a number. I therefore think it would be entirely appropriate for us, as a council, to commit to the funding to do the engineering. And I don't know that it has to be done as a, I mean, I know engineering firms can charge however they want, but, you know, they might be able to take a standalone project and get down into the weeds. We've got a $5.1 million estimate from Lanier. They gave us three, they gave us three. The first two, however, was to build a berth around, a bulkhead around the Battleship and basically put it on land. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about floating it in the water, the hull's gonna be repaired, it's gonna be good for another 50 years minimum. And so, that's the estimate that we need to hone in on, that 5.1 million. And you're talking about the monopile system, you're talking about taking the monopiles away from where you are at San Jacinto now and moving them, so you're not gonna have to fabricate new monopiles.
Well, you can't use them all, but we will take what we can, so it's kind of a two-edged sword there. The park itself is now under the Texas Historical Commission. So, you take the ship out, they don't really want those monopiles just over there poking up out of the water. We have a very good supporters, guys at CPS Houston, that have helped us. We've just finished restoring the propeller and the bells and everything else. CPS has agreed to take the tops of those things off and help us if that's the system we use, if it's monopile, may not be, may be cable or whatever. Let's let the experts decide on that.
Exactly, and that's why I'm saying what I think it would be appropriate for the council to do is to allocate funding to get an engineering firm, maybe Lanier, maybe someone else, to do an in-depth study and plans of what it would cost to bring the ship here and moor it safely. And that way, we have something to present to the State of Texas to consider when they next meet, which will be in 2023. But we need to have a number, and that's kind of where I think we should go.
Councilmember Turner. And Councilmember.
Earlier, you stated the Gulf Copper floating dry dock. Can you kinda explain that to me and educate me exactly what that is?
I can. So, this particular, I was shocked. So, a floating dry dock, the concept of it is, number one, it floats. We will bring it in, it has wings on the side. You can sink that dock, so we will sink it down under the water. And when we get it down where we want it, we'll float the Battleship over it, and then, the dock will come back up and literally lift the ship out of the water. And so, the problem is, they're really hard anymore to find. This particular one was in the Grand Bahamas, used for work on cruise ships. Somebody pushed the wrong button one day, and they broke that dock. Now, the dock is enormous, and it didn't break in half, it was like 70/30. And so, Gulf Copper bought the big section of that dock, the other, rest of it was scrapped. They want it for long-term use. And so, they're doing some work on it right now in the Bahamas. Once it is seaworthy, then they will tow it to Galveston where they will finish the rest of the work that they wanna do. It's their dock. And so, they bought it from a company in Florida that owns it. But the, to work on the ship, to get all the way down underneath it, we gotta get it out of the water. And the only way to do that is we will sink the dock, float the ship over, and as the dock comes up, we'll secure the ship, and it literally will be out of the water. Matter of fact, next year, we think one of the biggest fundraising things we will be doing is people who wanna come to the shipyard and actually see what's going on, maybe walk underneath the ship. We think that's gonna be a big visitation thing for us next year. So, hopefully, that explains, you can Google dry dock and watch one of them work, it's pretty amazing. I saw one more hand.
Councilmember Felschaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Bruce, as has been said, thank you for being here today. This all started when Councilman Getz came over to the Battleship Texas, connected with you, and brought this idea back to Beaumont. The foundation was here a number of weeks ago. You were scheduled to be here, but you could not because you had a medical emergency.
I had a heart attack.
So, we excuse you for that reason, but.
I will tell you this about that little thing, it started on a Saturday, I got four stents, and I was in recovery within about three hours of the start of it. I don't know a whole lot about any of it, except I now understand what stents cost. The stents are not so bad, it's the installation that would just.
You could have burnt the ship for what they did.
Yeah, just save your breath away, thank you.
But thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
And then, as was stated, the city manager and I and Councilman Neal came over because we had concerns. And I believe that's safe in saying that the majority of this council believes in theory that the Battleship Texas coming to Beaumont would be a good thing. But A, we had concerns about the financial commitment or the burden that would be placed upon the city beyond the initial investment, the ongoing maintenance and operations of this Battleship. But you've dealt with that, that the city is not going to have an annual commitment to maintain and operate the ship. So, that came off the list. The other concern that we had was that it would not compete with our present Riverfront Park development. We have a project that we're working on. We'd like for the ship to complement it, but not compete with it. And so, the placement of it was huge. And I think that can be addressed, and it can be shoved down further towards the corridor outfall, and it won't block what we're trying to do with Riverfront Park development. So, I think that issue has been dealt with.
Yeah, pardon interruption, I had one thing. The guys around me that do this, that are engineers and all that, we're all huddled around a computer one day on Google Earth, looking at the spot. And we all went, wonder if they'd be, would allow the ship to be moved down just a little. So, it's interesting that your goal and our goal may well be the same goal for different reasons. So, we actually thought a little movement of the ship in that original spot would be much better.
Well, and another concern we had is, of course, I'm 60 years old. And I love history, very patriotic, and of course, this catches my attention. But I do understand that there's a younger demographic that may not be as interested in this type of an event. So, the question is, how do you reach out to the younger demographic? And you demonstrated that to us and showed us a hologram that you have, which is only the first of more that are to follow. And so, it was encouraging to me that you, as a foundation, you understand that there's a younger demographic that may not be as interested in this as we are, and your work. working hard to address that issue. So could you speak to that and some of the other events that you're trying to do to get the younger demographic on that ship?
Let me start first by, by saying to you, in our overnight program, we're, we are over sixty thousand kids. There's a lot of people do these things. The, now, bear in mind, Lexington's an aircraft carrier, we're a battleship. We can sleep about a hundred-and-twenty or a hundred-and-thirty. They, they sleep about sixteen thousand a year down there in their overnight program. And so these things are really, really big. The other thing that we've done, and then I wanna say something about this hologram. Couple of Christmases back, I had this idea, and they were talking about children whose mom and dad were in the service and were not gonna be home for Christmas, and I went, we need to help on that deal. So we literally went to the board and said, we wanna invite children in whose mom or dad's not gonna be home, and we'll bring Santa out, and we're gonna shoot video, we'd take pictures and all of that. And we called Fort Hood, and they said, look, we don't have budget for this. And we said, nope, this one's on us. So we had Santa there. The interesting part about that is when the word got out in the ship community, what we were doing, that thing has caught on, and they're doing it from Hawaii to the East Coast now with that same program. Our, our young people do surprise you, but the other thing that was a really big deal for me was, I want you, when you walk on the ship in the future, to feel like you've stepped back in time to nineteen forty-one, and in a world, and if you got one, and I got five of them and ten grandkids, it's a video world, it's a computer world, it's a gaming world. We did a partnership with World of War Ships. You can go online and look at it. Our partnership was for ninety days, where they put the Battleship Texas literally in that game. I was hoping we'd raised twenty or thirty grand. Our first check was two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars. Was it a success? It was a monster success. And that's the younger demographic that's playing that. But the other thing we did is we went in and decided holograms, the ability to not just be wood and steel, but it for it to be a very immersive thing to come on the ship. We created our first hologram. Now, we happened to pick, one of the physicians on the ship was Dr. McCartell. We picked his stateroom because during work on the ship, that area is not gonna be disturbed. What it means to you is this, Dr. McCartell's son, John, is an old Bank of Boston guy, lives in Massachusetts. I still remember calling the McCartells, and I said, I wanna bring the good doctor back to life. And the guy who always has something to say got really quiet. And then it was, Bruce, you're gonna have to explain this one to me. And so I explained to John, here's what we're gonna do. Today, we have our first hologram. If you walk up to Dr. McCartell's stateroom, you don't have to do a thing. Suddenly, he appears on the other side of that door, and he does three scripts. He talks about what was going on at D-Day, he talks about a normal day for, for the physicians on the ship, and a little bit about him. This was a proof of concept for us. So now, when you come over and visit, and we, we were open July fourth, and again, Labor Day, we will be open December fourth and fifth, if you wanna come, come on. And we specifically opened that area of the ship and asked visitors to go down and take a look. The feedback was over the top, do more, do more, do, and the kids were the group that loved it, because that fits right in the wheelhouse of what they're interested in and what they do. We think kids are just gonna have an, and they do already, but they're gonna have an unbelievable, great time. This opens up summer camp possibilities for us. Now, bear in mind, we didn't operate the ship two years ago. That was a state. And so there are things we will do that they never would have done. We look at this as business guys. They looked at this as a state agency, and that's okay. We just will not do, we'll do some, but we'll do other things that they didn't do. And one of them is, we're gonna create more and more reasons for people to be around that ship. You start looking, was it two or three weeks ago, the big rally in Galveston with the motorcycles? There's no reason that can't happen right there. Boats, antique cars, I mean, the list of things to draw people in is as wide as you are imaginative to think about it, and I'm really good at that.
And how many did you have at July fourth?
We had ninety-six-hundred in two days that visited us, and over Labor Day, we had forty-four-hundred on those two days.
Mr. Bramley, you talked about the overnight program.
Yes, ma'am.
So they sleep on the ship?
They do. And there are no ghosts, by the way. I've been there a long time. So I could think about, yes, they board at six, and they are there till ten the next morning. We tell them to eat before they come. They do bring snacks and all that. We serve breakfast the next morning. We have a partnership with McDonald's. They are allowed to order from a certain list of breakfast items, and we have somebody that run up the street and get that food, and it's there. They disembark at ten the next morning.
How many are allowed to stay overnight?
Well, right now, if you really push us, we can sleep a hundred-and-thirty. Post the work in the dry dock, we think that number may be as high as a hundred-and-seven.
Okay, Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Neal.
Yeah, the economic impact analysis that you guys, that happened in Galveston, like, did Galveston as a city come out and do it? Can you kinda tell me how they went about that? How was it funded?
I can.
Okay.
So here's the best part. No, that, that study was commissioned by us, and it was done about five years ago, and it was one of those things where we said, what if the day should ever come, we could relocate the ship? What would that look like potentially? So we asked Deloitte to take a look at some different locations. Galveston was one of them. The really best part of that deal, former Lieutenant Governor Dewhurst is on, one of the folks on our board. Deloitte, Falcon Seaboard was a customer of Deloitte, so as a favor, pretty much, Deloitte agreed to do that study. It was very extensive. And the upshot of it was, we looked at what's, what would it do to our attendance? So what would it do to our revenue? But what would the, the impact locally be? The study's been out there for a good while now. If you haven't seen it, I'm happy to email it over. But it's close to ten million dollars year one for Galveston on the local economic impact. Estimate for us was we would be well over two-hundred thousand visitors. Visitation is everything for us, but let me also say this to you, we've been closed for two years. I got a business that's closed, and the overhead doesn't stop, and the bills don't stop. And we haven't missed paying anybody, because there's a lot of other ways that we raise money. I just mentioned one to you with the video game thing. Twenty-twelve, we did a partnership with Colt Firearms to do a hundredth anniversary nineteen-eleven Colt, like the ones issued to the ship. I'm, I'm thinking we might sell a hundred. We sold twelve hundred of them, raised eight-hundred thousand dollars off of that deal. What I'm saying to you is, there's a lot of, right now, if you go, if you get on our website, you can buy a piece of the deck wood. We have a machine that burns an image of the ship in there, and we'll put your name on it, and it has a challenge coin in each end. We do pieces of steel from the, I mean, this stuff goes on and on, folks. I raise a lot of money every year, and right now, it hadn't been off of tickets. But we gotta get open again, and along with what we do on ticket revenue, we'll continue to do all the other things we do. So I, I would agree with several of you. Get us somewhere where we can, we can have a few hundred thousand visitors, and we'll build it from there. Because when people see where this is going, our numbers are gonna explode. We're gonna do three-hundred-fifty, four-hundred, four-hundred-fifty thousand visitors a year. It's just a matter of time till we get there.
So my question to you is, where do you see Beaumont being a home base for your ship?
Councilman Getz said something to me in July. He said, Bruce, are we too late to this deal? And I said, you're late. I don't know if you're too late. I don't think so. The, in the end, our Board of Trustees is gonna make this decision. Mayor, from my heart of heart, what I would say to you is this, there are destinations where a lot of people go, and they go and stay for a night, or stay for a week, or whatever. And to my way of thinking, when this all first started, what I said to the chairman was, I said, Beaumont, and he kinda looked at me, and I said, Tony, don't forget this If you can't be the destination, the next best thing is be on the path to the destination. I know this, I've been up and down I-ten more times than I care to remember going to Florida and back, or Lake Charles or back. There are a lot of cars that move down that highway. You have a spot where people can see the Battleship Texas from that highway, giving them excuse to get off of that highway. I think that's where you parallel Mobile. You do it the right way, and I look at, at the, what's happened over there around Mobile. The HNSA Conference this year was in Mobile on the Alabama. I think that's your ticket. If it, something that this group is interested in, you gotta remember how many human beings go up and down that highway every day. You're talking about pulling them down to this area. Why am I gonna get off I-ten and pull down in there for an hour or a day or, or whatever? I know how they do it in Mobile. You look across there and you see the Alabama, and you go, oh, my gosh. The people come because there's something there they're interested in. I think that's your ticket. We could be a huge anchor for that development of that area for you. But that's, I don't get to make that decision. That's obviously the decision of this body.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Durio.
Couple of questions. You said the state gave thirty-five million to do repairs on the ship, and y'all already started using that money? How much is currently available for the actual repairs?
I think the to, I'm doing this from memory, okay? I think the total contract on that actual work was, is eighteen million. Now, before you start subtracting eighteen from thirty-five, let me tell you, there's a whole bunch of work that's gone in already. A good example of that is, if you go back one year ago, one year ago, we were finishing what we call foaming. So the Battleship Texas was leaking two-thousand gallons of water a minute, a minute. We had over fifty pumps pumping water out around the clock. Today, we leak less than five gallons, and we have two pumps running. Really critical, so you're gonna move a hundred-and-nine-year-old ship down the Houston Ship Channel, they'd kinda like for you not to sink it in there. They're a little narrow-minded about all this. I would tell you, we have simulated this at the Maritime College twice already with everybody involved, from the Coast Guard to the port, and everybody's like, oh, my gosh, this is doable the way you are doing it. We had to stop the water from coming in, plain and simple. We're gonna get water coming in on our way down. We can, but now we have it to the point, we can run enough pumps to stay ahead of the volume of the water coming into the ship, so we actually get to Galveston and don't sink it along the way. So all of those kind of things, that took almost a year to do all that work. So there's a lot of expenses in this. I will tell you, the thirty-five million is gonna do what it's supposed to do, but there're not gonna be a penny left, and I'm looking for more. I still have to find the money to pay, to paint it, the deck, all this other stuff. But just like the half a million federal grant we just got to deal with, we will find it, because we've been finding it for ten years.
And one other question. Oh, first estate. I'm actually the only one on council that was actually in the Navy. Just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you for your service.
There's a lot of recreational traffic on our river. Would there put, be any restrictions put on the recreational traffic as far as how close they could get to that ship, or if they could even go by it?
If they get too close, and we let that three-inch gun go, we'll, we'll kinda norm the behavior. No, there's, I'm glad you got the levity. Where we're currently at in the slip, I see people every now and then, I saw a big alligator get away with this, and the Coast Guard never showed up, that kinda came up in there and wherever he wanted. But people ride a jet ski or something up in there, and in a matter of seconds, the Coast Guard will be over going, you, you can't be up in there. By and large, it's never been an issue. We certainly don't want people, you know, pulling up banging on it, or graffiti on it, or, but short of that, no, not at all. And I would just add, for your own education, since nineteen forty-eight, we have a lot of traffic. So every major vessel just about that's going in and out of the Houston Ship Channel goes by us. And so we're used to that traffic being out there. Matter of fact, I think that's one of my favorite things about the area, is getting to, to see all those ships go by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. How much cash on hand does the foundation have?
Six million, give or take. Please don't hold me to that. Audit is currently going on, but the board met last week, and I'm gonna say in the five or six million dollar range.
Is y'all's audited financial statement and tax return on y'all's website?
No, but if you would like to look at either, I'm happy to send them to you.
Could you please send those to our city manager, whoever you've been corresponding with from the city?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Getz.
You know, this is a vision workshop, and I wanna share my vision of what we can do downtown to get people to come downtown. We have some great museums downtown already. We have the Texas Fire Museum. We have the Texas Energy Museum. And should we bring the Battleship Texas down here, a national historic landmark, that gives us three. In addition, we have smaller museums like the Art Museum, we have the Edison Museum. It's, it's really a lot of museums in a very, very small area. It's very densely, and so I think we can promote along I-ten, in addition to the Battleship Texas. You know, come in and visit some of our museums. We have the Babe Didrikson Saharius Museum just outside of downtown. So my vision to get people to come downtown is to promote our museums and get people to come off the interstate to look at them. And what will that do? Well, people that go to the museums are gonna need a place to eat, and I see this as a catalyst to revitalization of Crockett Street Entertainment District, and not so much as a area of honky-tonks and nightclubs, but more as a Kima-style, family-friendly venue of restaurants and shops and that sort of thing. And I, I think that would be, that, that would be a block away from where the Battleship Texas would be located. So all these people coming down to visit our museums, to visit the battleship, to visit our restaurants, I think it's a natural symbiotic effect that you would have here. I was also excited about some of the things that you said you would do should the Battleship Texas be brought to Beaumont, that you would uplight the battleship so that you could see it at night from, from the interstate. It would be a really neat thing. You even mentioned that once the cannons and guns, that on certain occasions, using blanks, you know, you could, on Veterans Day or something, you could fire the cannons. I just, I just think that the possibilities are endless you could have.
Yeah, and you've never seen a more beautiful backdrop for Fourth of July fireworks, one of the things we've done in the past. Yeah, we'd love to fire a three-inch gun every day at sundown, and certainly on the big holidays, Fourth of July, Veterans Day, and on and on and on. There's a lot that we can do. Again, we're just tipping the iceberg here. Let me maybe land on this final thing I'd share with you. We're very interested, we have to have a shoreside facility, you know, gift shop, place you by a ticket. Our gift shop's been closed for two years. Our online store is really picked up, but we need some museum space. The artif- The artifacts that we have, and a lot of them, you just can't put on the ship because of the climate. You don't, the, those items will get eaten up quickly. Let me just give you a quick rundown of the list. We have the ship bell, which we just restored. We also have the eighteen ninety-five bell, which we just restored, which is the bell off of the Texas before the Battleship Texas. We have the flag that flew over the Battleship Texas on D-Day at Normandy. I've been ten years here. I've seen that flag one time in my ten years. And we had it on display at the Houston Museum of Natural Science. We also have the flag that flew over the ship, um, at, uh, at, uh, Iwo Jima. The list of things, the uniforms, the photographs, the, the interviews of crew members, it goes on and on and on. There is so much, and we just restored the propeller. It's a sixty-odd thousand-dollar restoration. There's no reason we couldn't stand that propeller up inside a museum, and, and it will be the photo op of photo ops. And it keeps it out of the weather, so we don't have to do this again in fifteen or twenty years. But you just, the artifacts that we have are really mind-boggling. We currently have things on display at the Lone Star Flight Museum. We're about to do a display at the, uh, uh, Baytown Museum. Uh, and so again, to your point, those are the things that people come. Our first hologram in the museum, I want to put Eisenhower in there. I want Dwight D. Eisenhower to greet you when you come through the door and talk to you about the great history of the Battleship and the heroes that served, uh, our country so well. So lots more to do. I'm, I'm wel, I'm happy to come back. You're not that bad a drive for me. Uh, should you want me to come back, I'm happy to come back anytime. And I will send you the audited financials, uh, so that you guys can look at those. We have to have them, frankly, the first thing everybody asks us for is they want your IRS designation as a five oh one C-three. They want your ten ninety-nines. They, they want your audited financials. Um, I, I will tell you, the great thing about our audited financials is the auditor walks in every year of the board, and I remember the first year, I said, Deborah, does everything look good? And she said, what is it, what do you, what do you mean? And I said, was everything clean, or things as they should be? And she said, oh, no, y'all are not clean. And of course, it's not what you want to hear. And I kind of looked at her, and she said, y'all are squeaky clean. And I said, I would take that, that's an industry standard or an industry term. She said, the Battleship Texas Foundation is squeaky clean. I like being squeaky clean. What else can I answer for you?
Bruce, one last question on my part. Are you, uh, the foundation is trying to make a decision on its new location by the end of this year?
We have been trying to make a decision for a good while. Uh, we have not taken a recommendation to the board. The board will meet again in February. Uh, that, that doesn't preempt a spa, a, a, a called special meeting with them, which is possible. I don't think that's gonna happen with the holidays. February, they'll also accept the audited financials. I'm hoping by February, we can at least walk in and then maybe say, I, we want to look at these two options a little more. Can we bring in representation? Or, I don't know what they're gonna do. I don't get a vote. I am gonna make a recommendation. Uh, the ship goes out, uh, end of May. A year later, we need to be able to be ready to go somewhere. This is gone about as far as it can on a timeline. I, I know they would love to make a decision sooner than later. Uh, but there, I don't think they're gonna make one, um, because there's some other things going on and other possibilities. I don't think they're ready to pull that trigger yet, but they have liked to be. So the quicker you can give us what your thoughts are, then we can decide what's the next step we need to take to flush this out a little further. I, I think that would be a benefit.
Okay. Councilmember Turner.
So kind of echoing what Randy asked, I think you said in April, it'd probably be like twelve months before everything's said and done, so it probably wouldn't be a location. Even if you picked a location, you wouldn't get there to actually probably twenty twenty-three of.
So let me clarify a little bit.
Okay.
The dock is in Galveston in April. At the end of May, that dock is supposed to be ready for us. Matter of fact, there's a stipulation in the contract. If it's not, it starts costing Gulf Copper money. Okay, because this just can't go on and on. So we hope early June, we're headed down, and the work begins. Twelve months from now, it'd be June of twenty-three. At that point, it'd be great to come out of that dock and head wherever the new home is going to be, so we get open again. Yep.
So you're looking at twenty twenty-three?
Yes, ma'am.
For it to dock? June of twenty twenty-three?
Yep. That's correct. We are not unreasonable men and women. So it, it will dock when it docks, but for us, we've been closed for a while. We would love to get opened up again.
Mayor. Councilmember Getz.
One, one final thing. You know what else will be going on in June of twenty twenty-three? We should be opening Riverfront Park back up about that time. And I just think that all of this would be perfect to come together at one time so that the Battleship would complement, uh, that project. And I, I think that that's gonna be a tremendous time of excitement in Beaumont, and, but it requires us to lay the groundwork now. So, um, thank you again for being here.
Now, scripture calls it the law of the harvest. You reap what you sow.
I, I have a request, Mayor. You, you mentioned a letter from Carter Smith.
Uh huh.
Can you provide that to us as well?
I think I've already sent you that letter, but I'm happy to send it again. Uh, Councilman Getz, I think I sent you that letter.
I, I have it, and I think I shared it with the city manager. Do you have a copy of it? Okay. I attached it, I attached it as an email, but I've, I've got it, and if you'd send it again directly to the city manager, that'd be great.
I will. And do I have your email address? Okay, all right.
Mr. Bramley?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so very much. I want to say, you look the picture of health, so, great doctor.
The, uh, thank you. Uh, it was, uh, it was a scary few hours, and I was home alone when it started, and I've never had any history of any of all of that. Uh, one of my children lived right around the corner, and as they were taking me out the door, I handed my phone to my wife, and I said, call Blake, and then call Tony and, uh, tell him what's going on. And mildly upsetting, certainly blessed. The doctor said the best decision you made today was not to ignore that little bit of pain, and I was not in distress, but something was wrong. And so you're very kind to say that. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Well, let me also say that you've given us a wealth of knowledge, and you've answered questions that we didn't originally get the answers to. Um, as you say, it's unlimited possibilities, and, um, thank you for your information.
You're welcome.
Uh, be careful driving home, and happy holidays to you also.
Same to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. So it is eleven fifty-nine. We will break for lunch, and we will return at one o'clock. And hopefully, you will come back. So thank you. We will recess for lunch.